To the Board of Selectmen meeting for June 27th, we're missing Selectman Green. There's been, in the Boston Globe, there's been, it was a front-page article on should we be called a Board of Selectmen or a Select Board? I know in Concord, for example, it's the Select Board. And then, what are members called? Selectors?
Selectors.
Selectors? So I think, for the time being, I hope the women on the Board don't mind that I continue to call you guys selectmen.
Let's solve our 40B problem first.
Okay.
Priorities.
There you go. Announcements, one I'll remind the public about the upcoming big disruption on Commonwealth Avenue over the Mass Pike by the BU Bridge for, I think it's three weeks, starting at the end of July. That intersection is going to be closed, and it's going to be a giant mess, so stay away. And I think the impact is beginning in about a week, and they're going to be ramping up. So there's an information page on the Mass dot site, and we should link to that on our homepage. Right on the homepage, we should have a link to that, because it's going to really affect that part of town.
It's certainly going to affect me, because I come right across from Babcock to-
Right.
-go to my house in Hartford, so.
As an employee of Mass dot, I object to the term "a mess." We do a really good job of signage.
It'll still be a mess.
That's only because the public doesn't read.
I'll stand by my characterization, irrespective of the signage, as good as it may be. Any other announcements?
And this is going on while they're putting the cycle tracks on Com Ave in that section. So is that section going to be done? You know, they're tearing up the sidewalk on Com Ave to put in cycle tracks, so the timing really couldn't be worse.
Well, I think they're doing it, the bridge replacement, over the summer when traffic is the lowest, given that BU-
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm pointing out that there's this other large construction project on that segment of, you know, from Packard's Corner to the BU Bridge.
I suspect that's not going to be done.
Could be even worse than this.
Right.
Okay, sorry.
Any other announcements? I see none, anyone for public comment? I see none. Oh, Ms. Race.
Hello, Charlie Race. Just to, since you brought it up, I would like to say that the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations would support the Board of Selectmen changing that term and going with an alternative that is not sexist.
Okay.
Or is gender, let me say, is gender neutral.
Gender neutral.
Yes.
Wouldn't that be a town meeting action?
Well, I think you could propose what you might want to do, and then I think you could get-
Is it a home rule petition?
Requires a change of the charter as well.
Oh, really?
Yep, it's a whole process.
Yeah, it's more of a deal than-
Yeah, I'm sure it is, but we would support you starting the process and agreeing amongst yourselves what you'd like to be called, and then we could certainly get town meeting to propose something.
Okay.
Okay.
While I agree with Ms. Race, I would also agree with Selectmen, Selectwoman-
Selectwoman.
Selectwoman Hamilton, that we have bigger fish to fry, at least for a while. But I can be convinced. Okay, let's move on to our business. The minutes for June 20th, I have some modifications to these executive committee section. Any other changes? Then I'll move that we accept the minutes as amended for June 20th. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And we have a couple of transfers within the Health Department appropriation. Ms. Faison.
Good evening, Austin Faison, Assistant Town Administrator. So this first set of transfers is for the Health Department. Dr. Jett couldn't actually be here tonight, he's doing some military activities. But these funds will be used to purchase testing equipment for the pool and some equipment for field inspections. And it's two individual transfers. One would be for the amount of $2,192.81, and the second one was for $235. They're both going into special supplies from professional technical services from different divisions.
Okay, any questions or comments? I'll move that we approve two transfers within the Health Department appropriation from professional technical services, the amount $27.92.81, to special program supplies, and from professional technical services, $235, to special program supplies. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And the next item is Town Council, two transfers. You going to do that one?
I am. So two transfers, both going to General Counsel. This is just trying to shore things up for the end of the year, because a good amount of money has been spent in the General Counsel line. So it's transferring some savings from different lines over to that.
So this is a salary line, or?
Uh, no, it is not. The 5-5 lines are for our other categories, so that'd be Conferences is the first transfer for $2,400 to General Counsel. And the second line is from a 5-5 line as well, which is another other line, excuse me, Claims and Settlements transferring over, and that's for $18,600. And they're both going to General Counsel for general outside counsel.
Oh, it's, okay, it's for outside counsel.
Yes, excuse me.
We're hoping this will not require a further transfer from the Reserve Fund by making these-
Yes.
... adjustments internal.
Okay. I'll move that we approve the following two transfers within the Town Council appropriation: $2,400 from Conferences to General Counsel, and $18,600 from Claims Statements to General Counsel. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And the next one is an exciting grant that we got.
Well, you already announced last week that we did receive the Competitive Green Communities Grant. Maria Morelli's been working so hard at community aggregation, I told her I'd cover this for her. But essentially, we'll be using the money to do various energy improvements in town and school buildings, as well as the purchase of three EV charging stations. And so I just wanted to thank Maria Morelli for, she's the grant administrator, she's been doing a lot of good work with the Community Division, and also the Building Department and Charlie Simmons. They're the, they know how to spend this money very quickly, which is what DOE are led to see, so.
Yeah, and there's, a lot of it is going LED lighting, and then as Ms. Goff said, we're getting three new electric vehicle charging stations. One is going to go in the Center Street Lot, the Fuller Street Lot, and I believe-
Kent Street, yep.
Kent Street. So that's, so we'll have, how many town after that? Five?
Five, yep.
I would also like to say thank you to Maria, because she has worked incredibly hard, this aggregation. She's done a lot of one-on-one information for residents, she's done presentations, so she's been, you know, working very, very hard. And she also had kept this, the Selectmen's Climate Action Committee aware and engaged in this grant process, so we knew about it. And, you know, they're all good things, so I'm very supportive and thank her for the excellent work.
Should've passed that along.
Selectman Hamilton.
So do we have to spend this by the federal fiscal year?
No, it's an annual grant, so the grant cycle starts, well, the award just happened, so they'll have a year to spend it.
Oh, wonderful.
Charlie does it pretty quickly, though.
Great, okay.
Okay, so I'll move that we accept this grant in the amount of $233,247 as part of the Green Community Competitive Grant Program. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And the next item is a grant of $13,000 from the State Executive Office of Public Safety for the Shannon Community Safety Initiative Grant.
Good evening.
Chief O'Leary.
Yes, good evening. This grant is a continuation of the same type of initiative that we've been getting with Boston Police, we're going back about the last eight or 10 years, anyway. The amounts have fluctuated, but for, I think, the last five years, it's been consistent at $13,000. What we use that for is to work with high school on the Juvenile Roundtable, where we have discussions about what's going on in town, and we also do it when we have joint investigations with Boston on gang and youth violence, that they'll offset some of the costs that we have with them. So I know it's not a large amount, but it's good to stay in touch and keep to $13,000.
Okay. Any comments, questions from the board? Selectman Green.
Many times when we talk about gang activity, which I assume we don't have here in Brookline, right?
I don't think we have, I think we have gang members that frequent Brookline, and they have friends here, and they come in, and I mean, we've had some incidents in the Bronx.
They try to recruit people.
But as far, probably, yeah.
But what I wanted to emphasize is that, you know, gang activity is sort of this category that sometimes obscures the fact that all kids have issues that need to be intervened in. And, you know, it evolves into gang activity, or really, really antisocial activity, depending on surrounding circumstances. So I really applaud, you know, working with youth at risk, or whatever you want to call them, in the high school and here in Brookline, irrespective of the gang label, which I tend to think can be used in a very negative way and a very counterproductive way. But, I mean, it's much broader than that.
Yeah, and it comes and coordinates really well with the other grant that we had by Kim here a couple of weeks ago for just under $40,000, that really did a lot of our activity with the youth, and really, our community outreach with youth and dealing with them. And this takes another side that that grant does not, that does not account for, and I think with both of them working together, we can provide a much safe, a good safe environment for kids to grow up in.
Selectman Franco.
I'm going to take a, make a broader point here. I'm happy to see that you and your colleagues in the Police Department are working with Boston on these types of issues. You know, this is an example of a place where the whole metro Boston region is stronger because of collaboration. There is no wall between the border of Brookline and Boston, and there's a free flow back and forth, as there should be. But if the Boston Police and the Brookline Police are pulling in the same direction, sharing information, collaborating to try and eliminate some of these issues, I think we're all going to be better off for it. So thank you for stepping up and partnering with your colleagues in Boston.
Thank you.
Selectman Hamilton.
How are the officers selected for an assignment such as this? Is it the same kind of officers, or?
A lot of this work is, it's a variety, depending on what it is. The Roundtable, because we have a lot of our community service officers who participate in that, the officers that go into schools, go into housing, they all attend those meetings for us, bring the information back that's pertinent to us. The investigations, obviously, are, our detectives will be working with Boston, different units in Boston on joint investigations. So it really depends on what it's for, but it's a cross-section of, and multiple offices in our department, as well as Boston's.
Great.
Okay. I will move that we accept the grant in the amount of $13,000 from the State's Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the Shannon Community Safety Initiative Grant to be used for overtime costs associated with the attendance at Brookline Juvenile Roundtable meetings. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And we have one temporary wine and malt beverage license, and we've received the Police Department approval. The item appears to be in order, so I'll move that we grant the temporary license, so I'll move that we grant temporary wine and malt liquor, malt alcoholic beverage sales license to the Olive Connection for a wine class to be held on Saturday, July 8th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at 614-26 Beacon Street. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Moving on to our main calendar, the next item is a question of authorizing the filling of the Economic Development and Long-Term Planner Position vacancy in the Planning and Community Development Department. When I first heard about this, I was very surprised, but I now understand that the current incumbent, who I've worked with extensively, is moving to another position within the department, so I'm relieved that he's not leaving.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Steinfeld.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Allison Steinfeld, Planning Director. I'd like to acknowledge Andy Martino, who has served as our, one of our economic development long-term planners for several years. He's done an extraordinary job, but fortunately, he's accepted what is essentially a lateral transfer to the community planner position. So therefore, I am now here before you to request authorization to fill one of the economic development long-term planner positions.
Okay. Any questions or comments? So there's a plan of transition.
Yes.
Yeah, because I know he's smack dab in the middle of the Coolidge Corner Study Committee, so he'll, and we've talked about some transition.
We expect a very smooth transition.
Right, right.
I will share the chair's sentiments. I was shocked when I first heard about this, but I'm happy we've been able to retain Mr. Martino in town. I know, not only has he continued to be involved in the Coolidge Corner Study process, but he's wrapping up his involvement in what is now known as, I think, 700 Boylston Street, and has been thinking, helping EDAB and the department think about communications and engagement with citizens as well. So he's got a lot on his plate, but it's, I'm glad to know he's only a cubicle or two away.
And I presume you'll be doing the best you can to attract a diverse and broad applicant pool?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, I will move that we authorize the filling of the Economic Development Long-Term Planner Position in the Planning and Community Development Department. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
And the next item is the Citizen Complaint Process, a question of appointing two citizens to assist the police chief, Kelly Race, and Bobby Nabel.
Good evening once again. I have the great pleasure of introducing two women to the Board who really don't need to be introduced, but I'll take that on. As you know, as part of the Citizen Complaint Process that the Police Department has been working with now since 2010, there's a requirement in there that the chief with the Board of Selectmen end up asking two residents of the town to assist us in making a review of how we've been dealing with the process for the previous couple of years. This year, we asked Bobby Nabel, who is, as everybody knows, is a longtime Town Meeting member from Precinct 10, and she's also been an active member of the Advisory Committee for a lot of years. And she has a real good history in civil rights. I think all of us, or most of us, were up at the Fets Post about a week ago, and we got to hear her incredible story, and I think it was very, I think the appointment of Bobby to this committee would do us all well. Kelly Race, she's the chairperson of the Diversity Committee, Diversity, Inclusion in Community Relations. She's very active in the town, and I think that's a huge role in what we're asking her to do. She can bring what she's brought from that committee over to ours. When we ask them to take a look at the policies and procedures, and basically the citizen complaints that are filed against us, we hand them the complaints, as they come in, the investigations, the outcomes of it. We back off, she's been, both these ladies have been introduced to and have been provided with some cases already. They've met with us and Lieutenant Paul Campbell, and we're asking them to take a review, let us know what they think of how we've interpreted the process, how we've followed what's set out in the policies and procedures. And I think it's critical to us is to recommend any ways that the policy can be improved. They're going to take an outside look at it, they're going to see multiple cases across the board. Fortunately, most of our cases, or the majority of our cases are fortunate and unfortunate, but it's rudeness, it's discourtesy, it's not some other things that you hear in other places. But they're going to take a look at that and then advise us on what we can do. The end result is that they will be preparing a report, the report will come to the Board for your acceptance, and then it goes to the Town Meeting Reports for the rest of the town to see. So it's a quick thing, I would hope that the Board would agree with our recommendation that Kelly Race and Bobby Nabel be appointed to this committee.
Okay.
So I guess we're here to say that, at least I'll say for myself, that I'm willing to do the, I'm willing to do this. It certainly seems like an interesting process. We have already met with the chief and with Lieutenant Campbell, who have offered all of their support and assistance with this process. We have started reading the cases, and I think our number one recommendation is, is in the policy itself, is that it should be done every two years. It hasn't been done in four years, so we have four years' worth of cases to read. So we would ask in future that you do it every two years. I have nothing to add to that.
Well, I, for one, am grateful that you are willing to do this. This is a very important and sensitive area, you know, our confidence in our police and the public's confidence in the Board of Selectmen's oversight of the police is really, having an effective internal review process is crucial to that. And, you know, we get these reports, and I think it's good that we get a second outside opinion from people that we have trust and respect for, and you guys fall into that category, certainly. So you're going to help us tremendously and help the town, so I thank you.
I would add that I commend the chief. I don't think you could have picked two more competent people, so thank you, because it's such an important job, and we know that they will do it well.
You know, in connection with, I'm speaking, first of all, about Bobby Nabel. In connection with the work she's helped with on, with respect to the Commission, on the Advisory Committee and around town, Bobby is a calm, thoughtful voice in frequently uncalm, unthoughtful, very emotional issues. And I think that that's the type of voice we need in a committee like this. And with respect to Kelly Race, although we have disagreements on some things, I will say that on the Commission, as chair of that Commission, I've noticed that you've also been a calm, thoughtful voice on frequently difficult and emotional issues on that body. So I think this is a selection of two people who are extraordinarily good advocates for the town, and will be very, very helpful on the deliberations around the complaint process, so.
I will, oh, I will just say that, you know, I try my hardest not to pay attention to what's going on nationally, but it seems to still seep in from time to time. So the example of, you know, citizens being involved, you know, to this extent to help us make sure that we are as transparent and objective as possible is something very special to Brookline.
Okay, we ready for a vote? I'll move that we appoint Kelly Race and Bobby Nabel to assist the chief of police to submit a report on the functioning of the police complaint procedures in accordance with the process for police department discipline and selectmen's review. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. The next item is Police Department Policies and Procedures. So as part of the accreditation process, and it's also just good practice-
And I'm going to go up there and speak-
Selectman Green, why don't you introduce this? Or the chief, or?
Well, the chief can, as far as-
Okay.
Okay.
Instead of me trying to wing it, which is not, which is always dangerous.
Well, thank you for giving us the time tonight. This is a critical step in the accreditation process. The Department has, this is our second round of accreditation, we were first accredited back in 2013, and at that point, we rewrote all of our policies, or most of our policies that were lacking in certain areas. All of the policies have to meet some standards that are set by the state. The policies that you see online, that you, the changes that we've given you are all that we believe are in compliance with the accreditation standards, and we're hoping that at, tonight after your review that you've done, is that we can have a vote to put these in place so that officers know where they stand with the policies and we can move forward. As you know, Selectman Bernard Green was appointed by the Board to assist us in this process. We've constantly worked with him, we've exchanged the policies with him when we've done our upgrades. He's come back with his suggestions, his edits, what we want to add, and I'd say that we've added just about everything that he's requested to it, and I think you're going to, I think some of the policies reflect things that the Board has talked about. We've also worked with members of the Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations Commission. They have come up with suggestions on some of our policies, such as victim-witness advocates, domestic violence and criminal investigations, and we've incorporated some of their requested changes in the policies, policy updates that we have, you have before you tonight. This process, a lot of reading and writing goes into it, and I'd like to recognize the work done by Selectman Green and also several members of the Department. Detective Lieutenant Paul Campbell has overseen the accreditation process last time, and again, this time around. Sergeant Jennifer Pasta, who's here with me tonight, she really did the yeoman's work on rewriting the policies, taking down the information that various officers in the Department have given her, and putting them into a policy that's understandable. And Sergeant Christopher Lynn, who's working on some of the accreditation stuff tonight, and couldn't make it over here, but those three officers- and couldn't make it over here, but those three officers have really done the yeoman's work in the department on the process. I think what the accreditation process does, it really gives us an opportunity to demonstrate to our residents that we meet the standards that are set statewide. We meet and exceed the ones that are identified as being critical to the proper functioning of a police department. We didn't have to participate in this accreditation process. It was voluntary on our part, and we're one of only 55 municipal departments that have that status in Massachusetts. The changes that we've recommended to the policies, aside from what is going to bring us up to meet those standards, it also reflects a lot of the type of training and the type of direction we've been heading over the last several years. I think you know, you've heard me come here and discuss some of the trainings that we've done, some of the stuff that we've really concentrated on in order to perform our jobs that we think is better, reflective of what's going on today. And I think you've seen us move from the traditional model of policing into one that's more involved in taking care of people and being more of a service organization, a guardian mentality, if you'll use that expression. These updates in the policy allow us to show the community, really, the areas that we've concentrated on, that we can make a real good and positive impact. You'll see almost an entire rewrite of the use-of-force policy, and I'll get to that a little bit later in my remarks. But you also see a lot of substantive changes to juvenile operations and how we, as a department, handle those that are suffering from mental illness. And you've heard me talk about those from time to time during my time here. We've also added some new policies. I'll mention a couple that, special operations in the VIP security policy that we have in place now. We have a new eyewitness identification policy that's been put in place, together with the Board of Selectmen and the Diversity Commission. We have a federal immigration enforcement policy that's in place now. And then internally within the department, we have a policy in place on how we're going to deal with line of due death or serious injury to one of our officers. But we provided all these changes to the board. We provided them to Selectman Green. We've also put them on the department's website. A couple of weeks ago, they went up on the police department website. We linked it to the town's website. We put the information out on Twitter and Facebook that they can, the public can access the changes that we have up on there. And we're scheduled to have our assessment by the Mass Police Accreditation Commission beginning on Monday, July 24th of this year. But I do want to mention a couple of things in particular before I turn things over to Selectman Green. Over the last couple of years, we've had the good fortune of getting a couple of studies done in areas that are critical to policing. One of them was President Obama's 21st Century Policing Report and PRF, the Police Executive Research Forum's guiding principles on the use of force. Now, if you took those two studies, what we did as a department, we took those two studies and we gauged where we were in relation to what they were recommending as a good police department should have. For the majority of, the vast majority of the recommendations that were set out that applied to police departments, we were already doing. Some of the changes that are in the policies reflect exactly what was suggested by President Obama's report and PRF's guiding principles. And those are the most involved changes that you see in our policies. You know, from what we've said and from what has been written on some of the trainings that we've done, is over the past several years, we've really tried to change the mindset. We've really tried to change the culture of some of the tactics that get used in policing. We insist on our officers trying to de-escalate a situation, if that's at all possible. We get them to do this by providing a type of training that involves them from the step one. We will take recommendations from officers on how to develop scenarios that we can put our officers through. And our officers go through those scenarios, and we have anticipated outcomes that we expect them to achieve. Several of the occasions, we will film them going through scenarios where they have to decide how they're going to handle it, how they're going to resolve the situation. And once we film it, we'll take them to a private location and we'll let them review the film. And with supervisor, we'll tell them where they did right, we'll tell them where they did wrong. And I think it's a good way of learning for them, because it is changing a mindset. And we've been doing that. When we took a look at that use-of-force policy, probably two years ago, I went to, I had the opportunity to go to Scotland and spend time with the Scotland police and learn how they can de-escalate situations without firearms. About 2.5% of their department nationwide has a firearm. Everybody else is equipped with an ASP, a shield, and a TESA, or not even a TESA, a spray. But really what they do is they communicate. They talk. They take their time. They keep time and they keep distance away from the person. There's no need rushing in, which I think a lot of times, American police forces do. So we saw how to do that. And I came back, and fortunately, when we brought it up at command staff meetings and training meetings, our officers were on board with that, because we had slowly started to do that through our training. We also took it a step further. We sent three of our officers, Deputy Andrew Lipson, Lieutenant Phil Harrington, and Officer Peter Muse, down to New Orleans to get trained by some of the elite police departments in the United States that are using PRF's recommendations on use of force. So when they came back, they came back with a curriculum on training our officers, and they came back with ideas on how to rewrite the policy. When you read our policy, when you read our policy, you'll see that we, like I said earlier, we do insist that if it's at all possible, you de-escalate. There's no need for you to rush in. You try to communicate with the person that you're dealing with. You try to back off and give that person some time. We don't expect you to clear the call in five minutes. You want to take three hours, take three hours to get people out of there safely. And that's what our policy does. And it also does one other major thing, is to change the mindset, you really got to change the way you think. And we put in a decision-maker model in there. That's reflective of what they do over in Europe, but it's also reflective of things like the Boston Police SRT unit, or the New York State Emergency Services Unit. This is what they've been training in for years. And what it is, is it gets off of a pyramid-type thinking to a constant evolving thinking, because things change on the fly. And you've got to remember to rethink how you're handling things when things start changing in front of you. You have to recognize the change, rethink, reassess. And if it requires you to change what you're doing, if you stop, slow things down, move people out, then that's what you expected to do. So we've changed all that. We've trained our officers in that. And that, I think, is a big part of these updated policies and procedures that we're asking you to approve tonight. So I think I'll stop there and turn it over to Selectman Green.
What I'd like to do is to talk about the Board of Selectmen's role in this whole process, the critical issues that face the board in terms of our responsibility to the town generally, and the fact that these policies and procedures are a living document, sort of like our constitution, a living document. So parallel to the process of reviewing and updating the department's policies and procedures for reaccreditation, the board has been acting in the role of police commissioners to address certain issues that we consider critical to the type of police department in town that we want. And, you know, I use quotes around police commissioners, because that word has been thrown in our face a lot.
Sure has.
And it's been thrown in our face in order to suggest that we have some day-to-day control over the police department, and we are responsible for everything that happens there. When in fact, all that being a police commissioner means is that we hire the chief and provide for his compensation. And we're responsible, under the statute that we have adopted here in Brooklyn, for making suitable regulations governing the police department. So our role as police commissioners really is intimately tied in with the role of the policies and procedures of the police department. So the current updating is central to, you know, our responsibility as so-called police commissioners. So in making, in doing our work, I don't think that there's any expectation that all the board members have reviewed, critiqued, thought about, et cetera, the 700-plus pages in the Policies and Procedures manual. Sergeant Jen Pasta and other members of the department have done that and done that very well, in excruciating detail, and better than me. But what I worked on, along with Sergeant Pasta and Chief O'Leary, in reviewing the regulations, are those things that raise critical issues for the town. You know, my role was to raise questions, make suggestions, as a civilian, not as a police expert, because I am not one. But make suggestions and work with them with respect to the sort of broad policy issues that we as selectmen are really responsible for. So the critical regulations, in my view, that I urge you to pay some special attention to, you know, that I did have some involvement with and other people have had involvement with, relate to domestic violence, use of force, as the chief discussed earlier, the stop-and-frisk policy, civil rights, criminal investigations, victim-witness assistance, and mental illness policies. These are the policies, among others, that really create the most tension between citizens and, or they represent areas where you find the most tension between citizens and the police department. And having good policies in those areas is essential to having a good, effective police force that has support of the community in the broadest sense. In addition, this board and this community has determined that, or has decided that, another critical issue is the whole issue around immigration and enforcement of the immigration laws, or not, by local police departments. As you know, the board reviewed and revised immigration proposals from the Diversity Inclusion and Community Relations Commission, and included added input from members of the public. And they are now in what's called Special Order 43. And we all know what's in that, but, you know, the people listening to us on TV should pay special attention to that in going to the police department's website where these regulations are located. The board also revised the definition section of the manual with respect to general orders and special orders, which is a big issue around town. I think we addressed that in a way that should satisfy all reasonable, you know, persons who look at that. And finally, with the assistance of, you know, especially Tony Nero and the Diversity Commission, a variety of sort of small changes were made in multiple policies to address immigration issues, just putting in language with respect to what police should and should not ask or do with respect to people who may or may not be undocumented residents of our The police department's policies and procedures, like I said initially, are not a sort of dead document. They're a living document. And they are alive because they can evolve over time. And what I'm suggesting, or what I'd like to suggest, is that, you know, the commission, the Diversity Commission will be working on a number of additional proposals in the area of immigration in particular, and probably other areas. For example, currently, Tony Nero and the others are working on proposals with respect to the department's role in any immigration, customs enforcement raids that may occur in town. So they're putting together some ideas that will be very unique in the country, I think, in terms of addressing this issue, which will become, unfortunately, an increasingly hot-button issue in this country. I also expect that selectmen will be looking at policies in their spare time, you know. And to the extent that we identify issues that, you know, maybe should be addressed with amendments or changes, you know, that could be put into the pot also. And of course, members of the community are urged to go to the website and review the policies and procedures themselves and bring any ideas they have to the board for our consideration. And, you know, in that process, we'll begin to improve the policies and procedures even more than they are now. And I think they're very, very good. If you read them, you're just shocked at how incredibly good they are in terms of addressing the specific issues that everyone in this country is talking about with respect to police community relations. But, you know, we'll have whatever comes into our pot, and, you know, they'll be presented to the town council, make sure that they're legal, presented to the chief, make sure that they're practical and don't impede the reaccreditation process and are not otherwise in conflict with other rules. And over time, we'll evolve these policies and procedures even more than they are now. But the point is, I mean, these are living documents that we have to see as documents we should be on top of, think about, and make sure that they are addressing, you know, ongoing needs. So in conclusion, you know, the board is being asked to approve significant changes to the police department's Policies and Procedures manual. A summary of the substantive changes, you know, was provided in the document in our packet called Highlights of Updated VPD Manual, which I assume is also on website. And Chief O'Leary's presentation, of course, and my presentation. The process of updating the manual has been open and transparent, and included welcome input from the Diversity Inclusion and Community Relations Commission, and the community, and this board. And the result of this process has been available to the entire community for their review on the website of the police department. I think on the basis of all that, you know, this board is in a good position to approve these policies and procedures. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll just, in my review of the summary, I was immediately drawn to the use-of-force section and noted the major overhaul and the change of approach that the chief had highlighted. But this isn't a surprise, because whenever the chief has come to us of late and when there've been incidents, the theme we've always heard has been one of de-escalation, taking the time. And I'm glad to see that that's now memorialized into the policies in a concrete way. So that, I think, is very good. And I'm glad to see that the section responding to individuals with mental illness has been And the other section that I was drawn to is the section on victim-witness assistance with a new focus on the victim and the witnesses, including taking steps to provide them with protection and paying particular attention to keeping them safe and encouraging them to participate. And, because without witnesses, prosecutions become impossible. And there's a sentence in here that the department will take all reasonable steps to ensure the safety of victims, so that, I think that's very important. Anyone want to say anything?
These are very good changes, I think, and they seem to reflect some of what you do, but I think that they reach out and go further. do, but I think that they reach out and go further. And I'm glad that you're paying attention and really honing in on the training issues, because that obviously is the critical thing. It's great to have things on pieces of paper, but unless people know what they are and understand them, and can actually carry them out, then the pieces of paper are pretty much worthless.
Right.
So, I think that that is really critical. And I think every time you apply for one of these grants for training, and for, you know, use your training budget to further promote goals that are set out here, that's a really good thing.
And because there's a lot of changes, one of the suggestions from Patrol Division, Deputy Lipson had suggested that we allow time for scenarios to take place while officers are on duty. We've been doing that over the years, like going into schools during school vacation and learning the layout, but also if an event takes place in the school, we know, we're familiar with the theories of the buildings, but they want, the officers want to take it to a different level, and work with the, work on scenarios based on the same offices that work the same shift will have to work a case together, and they want to be able to do that as part of their daily routines, which we're endorsing 100 percent. So, you'll see a lot of that coming up from the officer level, which is really good to see that happening.
Selectman Franco.
I want to pick up on something that Selectman Green was saying about these policies being a living document. So, I want to commend you for seeking reaccreditation, going back, and essentially having your colleagues take a look at our policy and make sure that they make sense, not only in our eyes, in your eyes, the Brookline perspective, but more broadly. There's some collective wisdom that's brought to bear on these policies. I want to just echo again what Selectman Green said about this not being sort of a one-off thing that we're going to do every three or four years, that this board, I think, both through some recent actions that we took, and some renewed interest nationally, intends to dig in on these things periodically, as issues come up, and make sure that between these reaccreditation processes, the policies and procedures match what this board believes is the right path, and amends it to take stock of external events, maybe even internal events. So, thank you for seeking reaccreditation, and this is a step in a process, not the termination of a process.
Thanks. Do we feel comfortable for a vote? Okay, so I will move that we approve the updated rules and regulations for the government of the police department of the town of Brookline as presented, as summarized in the packet and presented in the full rules and regulations. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
And let me publicly thank Sergeant Jen Pastor for incredible work that she's done.
Okay, the next item is a public hearing on the water and sewer rates for fiscal year 2018, and I'll just note that we're running about 20 minutes behind.
Austin can keep his job. Right. Further, my name is Fred Russell, Water and Sewer Director for the Public Works Department. And I've got a brief presentation, which we've actually had posted on the town's website on the front page for the last three weeks, as you'll see. I'm hoping this is rather straightforward, in the sense that we're not proposing any sort of a water and sewer increase this year. But with that being said, as I typically do for some of the newer members of the board and the public, I go through and just explain how our water, where water and sewer rates are made up. First, there's a base rate, that is a fixed rate based on the meter size of the water service, and it's essentially, it's a fixed amount of income that we get to essentially take the operation cost, the general cost to send water bills, read water bills, and that sort of thing. So, it's fixed in that sense. The next portion is the block rates, and that's based on, it's a usage-based fee, based on how much water you use. For instance, from zero to seven, that's 100 cubic feet, is one fee, and then eight plus is another fee, and then we also have a separate fee for irrigation as well. And the last is a fire service fee, which is essentially more, oh, that's commercial buildings, large buildings that have a dedicated fire service from, connection from our water This year, really, one of the benefits we had this year was our MWRA assessment, which typically drives our rate increases or whatever, essentially stayed the same. You can see it's actually about $37,000 less than last year's assessment. Our debt service also went down, and we did have some increases, but for all in all, it's basically a net zero-sum game as far as expenses for the system. And as a result, as you can see here, I'm proposing that we not have any increase based on FY '17 rates. With that being said, I have also included a couple more slides that I'd like to just brief the board on, moving forward where we're going. I've included a $300,000 capital item in this year's budget for water improvements. And basically, what it's meant to do is to update, you can see some of these studies that were done that are more than 10 years old that we need to update. All those sort of fold into one another, and ultimately, what the main goal is going to be, is to have my department basically be careful with this, that everybody working on tablets and that sort of thing. We've actually started doing that now, in some of the portions of what we do, but that's the ultimate goal in updating some of those studies. Also, we are currently in year two of a 15-year CIP aimed at reducing inflow and infiltration into the sewer system. This, I will go back to the MDRA assessment, the better we do on II or infiltration and flow removal, the better our assessment will be. And we've been able to take advantage of that over the last few years. This is essentially the town's map, we've divided it into 15 different subsections of where we're going to analyze, and then do some, essentially, it's lining sewers, similar to what we had done to the water system back in the 80s and 90s with the previous director. Here's our cash flow, and if you have really good eyesight, you can see that essentially the grant total is right around $44 million over the next 15 years. And we're on track with that currently.
That's the proverbial blizzard of numbers?
Yes. And the last thing is stormwater. You've heard a number of times that the EPA has issued a new permit to the state of Massachusetts, it's called an MS4 permit. And basically, it's targeting phosphorus loads on the Charles River, and requiring us to reduce our phosphorus loads. As you can see, there are some rough numbers. You can see we essentially have to cut our phosphorus loads in half. They've created a schedule for the first, essentially, the first five years will be planning, and then the next 15 years will be implementation. This is set to go into effect July 1st of this year. However, there has been an appeal being made, which the town of Brookline is part of, and the court just issued recently, within the last week, it's sort of issued a stay, which ultimately will probably push this out to July 1st of 2018.
So, where does phosphorus come from?
Fertilizers, car exhausts.
So, this is runoff?
Correct. Right. Essentially runs off people's lands, then free the fertilize, compost, again, carbon exhaust from cars onto the ground, into the catch basins, and ultimately into the muddy river, and then to the Charles River, so.
Are detergents also, are detergents also a source?
No, not for phosphorus. That's.
Used to be.
Used to be, didn't it?
Yeah, but that goes to Deer Island. This is through the storm.
Right. Yeah, this is, that's storm sewer, I mean, that's sanitary sewer, which goes to Deer Island, as Chairman Wieschowski says. This is actually stormwater when it rains that goes into the catch basins, and ultimately into the rivers.
So, what can homeowners do to cut the use of phosphorus?
By non-phosphorus fertilizers.
Are those organic fertilizers?
Yes.
Or is that different?
Typically, organic. What we currently do, we, between myself and the engineering department, when we have a proposal or a site plan for a new development, or a new house, or that sort of thing, we require a site plan review, and what the requirement is, is to essentially hold all of your runoff onsite into some sort of a subsurface infiltration system. And that's the best way to essentially reduce runoff to the lakes and streams.
Is that what would be in our plan for reducing our load?
Correct. Yes. Yeah, again, we're currently doing that now. What we are allowed to do.
Are you saying the town is currently doing that?
Correct. We've been doing that for quite a long time, and if, just to go back, Selectman Green, to these numbers here, these numbers are generated probably 15 years ago. And what they've allowed us to do is, over these last 15 years, we've documented what we've done on these site plans, and we'll be able to get credits and apply credits to that, to bring that number down, once the permit is implemented.
But we're a built-up town, for the most part, so.
Yeah, the site review is only effective in new developments.
That's correct. That's correct.
So, what do you do about all the places that are already, you know?
There's low.
My house is 115 years old, or whatever.
Right, right. But also, we're talking about roadway runoff. There are slow-impact sort of mechanisms that will, best-mentioned practices, that we can put in place to sort of infiltrate or clean the water prior to getting into the catch basins. Again, there's methods to do it, but what I was going to show you is that, that's our forecast for the next 20 years, and you can see the costs, just some of the rough costs associated with treating some of that rainwater for existing sites or existing roads. We've been getting a unit price of anywhere from $50,000 per pound to $120,000 per pound based on the mechanism you use. So, we've done some forecasting, we're still actually looking at how we want to go about funding the stormwater costs moving forward. I seriously think I'm resurrecting my task force that we actually put the pilfer in the last year to look at the water and sewer rates, which two of the gentlemen are here tonight with us. Essentially, just to go over what might be a fair and equitable way to assess the stormwater fees, or stormwater costs. Right now, we're absorbing them in the water and sewer fees, but ultimately, it's probably moved forward, we should probably have it separated as a separate fee.
This is a significant environmental effort, is.
That's correct. That's correct.
So, people should understand that it's not, you know, it's not something we should take lightly.
Absolutely.
Obviously, we want to have clean waterways.
And one of the, one of the best, I guess, cheapest things that we can do is public education.
So, the reduction, is that mandated by one of the state agencies, or federal?
EPA.
Maybe that'll be one of Mr. Trump's initiatives.
And with that, if there's any questions?
Well, this is a public hearing. Does anyone from the public wish to speak? Mr. Laskoye.
David Laskoye, town meeting member, precinct. And it's great to be here with no rate increases coming. We've been meeting occasionally with Fred, keeping up on the wonderful work that's being done, and how we're keeping our infrastruc, water and sewer infrastructure in good shape. I wanted to talk a bit about a couple of topics that we've heard tonight a number of times, the word "policy." So, I wanted to talk a bit about, again, about our rate-making policy, which was a concern about that that led to the warrant article and the requirement for hearing, our chance for us to come and talk about how it's all put together, and how it affects the residents of Brookline. The second, also, I'd like to talk a little bit about discounts for low-income Brookline residents policy. So, first of all, on the rate setting, after our meetings with Fred, started to learn a little bit about rate-making policy. It's not only waters, but electricity, all of it, who knew it was so complicated? So, I'm glad that we have Fred and the department here to take care of all of this, and I wanted to sort of maybe indicate some areas where.
It's kind of like healthcare, right?
Right. It's an area where maybe we can make some improvement, because I don't think we can make much improvement in terms of the way the infrastructure's being managed, and the way the service is being delivered. There may be some opportunities with respect to policy. Now, in rate-setting policy, when looking at this manual that's put out by the American Water Works Association, it goes through three different steps. First of all, you determine the revenue requirements, then you determine cost allocation, and then you do the rate design. Going back to 2011, in our Weston and Sampson rate study that was done at that time, which has brought about the structure that you heard about tonight, interestingly, in reviewing that, did the revenue requirements, and then they did the rate design, but somehow, the cost allocation part of it wasn't done. It was skipped over that step. So, I just wanted to say a few words about what is involved with cost allocation, and maybe it's time to do another study and begin to look at that. Cost allocation means allocating revenue requirements according to patterns of use. In Brookline, we have different patterns of use for different categories or classes of customers, single-family is different from multifamily, is different from commercial. Each of them has unique patterns of use. Now, in view of this, the principle should be, costs should be allocated to customer classes in proportion to the respective demands these customer classes place on the utility system. But this is not true in Brookline currently, because we have a one-class system and several diverse patterns of use. And if we look at the data that we have, it's very clear that there's a dramatic difference in the patterns of use. I just looked at what three items, and there's certainly much more to do in this, 20% of Brookline residents live in single-family dwellings. However, 55% of the service connections are single-family, but only 26% of the consumption is delivered to single-family customers. This is indicating a big difference in patterns of use. So, we need to move away from a single class. So, that's the rate policy. I also wanted to mention briefly the possibilities and opportunities we have to provide relief to low-income residents of Brookline. Right now, around 10 residents receiving relief under the assessors 41C and 17D programs. In Northborough and Needham, they're doing much better, because they are piggybacking on means-tested programs for eligibility, so the low-income energy assistance recipients, energy, home energy assistance recipients, public housing, persons receiving public housing benefits, veterans' benefits, and women's, infants', and children's programs. Those groups, it's probably 800 or so in Brookline that qualify for those programs. And, so we could look at that, rather than just the 17D and 41C. And actually, in this book, there's a chapter on how to do it. And there are mechanisms which would be very easy, and inexpensive, and simple to implement and deploy, that, because one of the problems with the current one, and what is being done in communities other than Needham, is that it applies only to those whose name is on the bill. So, we need to find a way, because Brookline's 50% rental and 30% condo, and if we're going to really provide some relief, we need to include all of the. to really provide some relief, we need to include all of the residents of Brookline, not just those who pay water bills. Okay, so I have three recommendations. The first is to do a new rate study, which will allocate customer, allocate costs by customer class, including the determination of the fiscal impact of a low-income discount. I mean, those, the low-income discount and the class-based study need to come together, because in the end, the revenue has to end up being the same. The cost rate study should be incorporated into, now, to do this study, it should be incorporated into our Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund budget request for the coming year. So this is a good time to be talking about it, because the budget cycle hasn't started. And I think that even with what Fred's already put together, this is a fairly small amount of money, and with what is budgeted for reserve and what is in reserve, we can probably handle it, although we can work with him on that. I've already discussed it with him, and he's receptive, at least to the idea, to the suggestion. And this is, I think, directed to the town administrator, to Fred, and to the department. It's not something to decide or vote on tonight, but I wanted to sort of bring it up, so that as the budget process started, this can maybe be at least considered. And I would also recommend, as the last recommendation, Fred mentioned the group of us that's been meeting, that we would be able to have an opportunity to comment and advise as this study is carried out. Thank you very much for your time, and I'm hoping that we could maybe use this year, which we're not talking about rate increases, to take a look at our policy and make it a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frye?
Ernie Frye, 423 Washington Street, Brookline resident. Chair Wasinski and other select, select persons, I can't say selectmen, because I understand there's a debate going on in the internet about whether you should be, whether female members of the board can be called selectmen. So, select persons you are. Thank you for arranging for this public hearing, and thanks to Commissioner Papa Sturgeon and Director Russell for their recommendations to continue the FY17 water and sewer rates to FY18. For next year, especially if there's a recommendation to increase or restructure the rates, I would like for at least a week between the public hearing and the vote of the selectmen on the rates to permit greater deliberation and possibly further written public comment to be provided to the selectmen. My understanding is that you will be approving the rates tonight, which is no big problem, because we're not going to change anything. That's, that's fine. Our current water billing structure is based upon the amount of water that flows through a meter, whether that meter is serving a single-family home, a multi-family home, such as a condominium structure or apartment building, a business, a religious facility, or a town service building, such as a school, firehouse, or indeed, this town hall. The block structure, where the first 700 cubic feet of water flowing through a meter is assessed at the lowest rate, favors the single-family residents over multi-family residences. For example, I live in a six-resident condo building serviced by a single meter. Assuming that each of the six households consume the same amount of water as a single-family home, I will move to the higher charge when I have used 117 cubic feet of water. The single-family home will have more than 550 cubic, more cubic, more cubic feet of water to use and pay at the lower block rate, because it is also serviced by a single meter. At last year's public hearing, the director heard a request from Selectman Franco about whether it was possible to know whether the number of households associated with each meter could be incorporated into the water database. Such a step would be required to permit our considering whether our water charges should be changed from a meter-based structure to a household-based structure. We have considered whether we might be able to use the addresses that appear in the water database to the addresses in the Assessors database to determine the number of residences for each meter. The result of such an inquiry is disclosed that about 15% of the addresses on the water database cannot be located on the Assessors database. This is not an acceptable rate of error to relate the two files for a reliable charge And we have found that addresses on the water database for multi-family units, especially condominiums with multiple addresses, present problems. For example, one entry on the water database for 36 Brown Street can be related to six condominium units on the Assessors database for 36 Brown Street. But that water meter also measures the water used by two other addresses, 228 and 230 St. Paul Street, and those addresses also appear on the Assessors database, but not relatable to the 36 Brown Street address. Clearly, some resource would need to be expended to be sure that we understand how many residences are associated with each meter if we are to use a rate structure that is household-based. We did inquire the Assessors Department whether they knew about the number of residential units that were in multi-family units owned by a single entity, such as apartment buildings. Indeed, they did, but the information was not available on their database. Within one week of our inquiry, the Assessors database had been updated with that information, and it is now available to report back to the water database, should there be a desire to incorporate the number of residences for apartment buildings into the water charge structure. As noted previously, any revisions to the rate structure should consider commercially-used buildings and multi-used buildings with storefronts on the first floor and residences above. Buildings used by religious organizations may also be considered for a separate rate. Both of these situations may be easily discovered by referencing the Assessors database. I strongly urge the selectmen to encourage the Water and Sewer Department to expand their database with the number of residences per meter, so that at next year's public hearing, we shall hear proposed rates that will be more fair to Brookline households, houses of worship, and all of those various types of water use that is in keeping with the desires of the selectmen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Fraly?
Thank you. Regina Fraly from Precinct 16, and I have nothing prepared but thoughts in my head. As you are well aware, I care deeply about seniors in Brookline, and particularly from my area, where they have modest single-family homes. I don't know much of the data and the rate structures they've talked about, but back in the day, when board of selectmen had four o'clock sessions, it was a fact that people who used the least amount of water had a higher rate, because the assumption is, you've got to meet the, the cost of the infrastructure. So they actually raised the rate for those of us who are from an era that the way you save money is you cut back on your utilities. That's number one. To prove how little I use, I've, you can look it up, it's public information. I had a roughly $9 a quarter water use, and my bill was roughly $90, with the base fee and the sewer fee, which is normally double the cost of the actual water. We seniors use almost no town services. We save you money, because we're living in our homes, we are not turning them over to families with children, and there is, in my area, there are no town structures, tax structures, that would account for even one child's cost to go to the Baker School, for example. So sociologically, when you think about stakeholders, also think about the equity and fairness and the value of the, the role of seniors in the town of Brookline. We give a lot, we take very little, we save the town hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in school costs. That has to be factored in when you talk about, well, how can we increase the opportunity for seniors to save some money on their water bill? It helps keep us in our homes. That should be put on a, on a grid to show you contrast to what it costs to put a child in the Baker School, for example. So as you consider new potential policies, or you guide the, the water department into considering them, please factor in the equity of that and the benefit to the town of keeping seniors in their home as much as possible. Remember, when we moved in this house, we did not have sewer fees. They were incorporated in our taxes. We did not have trash fees, they were incorporated in our taxes. So the social contract changed. And from the point of view of the senior, that's a hardship, and it would be like any contract, is like, what would happen? You change the terms, and we have no power as a partner in the contract? And that's what's happened. We haven't had any power in the social contract in the town. And I hope that the selectmen will guide and realize what a value seniors are in their homes. Help us stay there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Russell, are you, you mentioned you're considering doing some degree of rate study?
Well, I was, I said I was thinking of resurrecting the task force to do some other exploring of the storm water needs in the future, but by all means, we can, we can look at the, the water rates as well, which I believe we had done previously, but if we need to run that around the fight pole again, we will. Could I just touch on--
Sure.
--on the senior discount?
Yep.
Because I did a little bit of research, and basically, the guidelines for, for the qualifications for the elderly abatement is basically set up through Master General Law. And the eligibility of those, those residents is confirmed by the Assessors Department. Once the Assessors Department confirms that, they essentially send us the address of the residence, and they automatically get the elderly abatement for the water and sewer rates. So my point for bringing that up is that there's no mechanism in place for us to increase the elderly abatement just in the Water and Sewer Department and not through the Assessors Office and not through Master General Law. Now, I understand David Laskoye brought up some other things, but, but again, my point for bringing this up, I'm not sure if this is the right forum to bring it up, because it starts with the Assessors Department, and then it trickles down to the Water and Sewer Division with the water and sewer rates. So I just wanted to make that clear.
The state did not tell you to put a base charge on our water meters. That was a choice this board made. You can remove the base charge, that would go a long way toward our budgeting. Thank you. It's not just about the rates, it's about the added charges you were in charge of.
Thank you, Fred, for that clarification. And I wanted to clarify also, looking around the state and looking at the powers of the water commissioners, we're not limited to those Assessors categories. We could develop other categories, and it is an opportunity for this board, as we're doing overrides and everything else, it may be useful to be able to provide relief through this mechanism. It's out there, it's been done in other communities. I would, I don't think it can be done in isolation from an overall rate study, because it has impact on the revenue.
Mr. Chairman, I think on behalf of the Public Works Department, we certainly will review those. I would note that there is a current committee that's ongoing, I think it was generated by a town meeting resolution that looked at property tax, presumably in anticipation of some big override debt exclusions coming up in the horizon. I don't know if it's too late in the process to incorporate some of this thinking, but if not, we certainly will commit to doing that during the rate review process next year.
I could respond to that. It was limited only to the taxes. It did not include fees. And fees are really killing a lot of seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frye?
I, I would like to just clarify, the reason that there are only 10 people that qualify for this discount across the town is because the billing, the bill must have the same name that's on the Assessors database. Since many of our people live in condominiums or apartments, they do not qualify, because the bill is issued in the name of the condominium association or the owner of the apartment. That is an area that I believe that this board should be able to look at, and it's certainly something that we, those of us involved with, working with Fred, will certainly take a look at to find out how we can get around that bend. It still would need to go to the Assessors Department, Fred is exactly correct, but we need to remove that restriction that exists within the water department rules.
Thank you.
I may have missed it, but I don't believe anybody's mentioned why, what the threshold is for those 10 people. It's below or about $20,000 a year. The senior center has recognized, and state law has recognized, you cannot live in this community for that kind of money. So the, they have raised their tax workout program threshold, because they realize that. And that's the same opportunity and the same approach, policy-wise, the same values you can apply to removing some of the fees, the base fee, the trash fee, something along that line, because, I'll tell you something, nobody can live without water. You've got us by the throat. So release the grip. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
No, a lot of food for thought.
I will, I will again say that I think a rate study is in order. I think we've heard some things this evening. I, in previous years, have expressed my confusion about why we have a separate fire charge, a fire service charge. It seems to me as though that's a social good. It benefits not only our firefighters, but also abiding community, properties, excuse me, when there's sprinkler service in a building. It limits the, the spread of fire, and only the multi-family, residents of the multi-family dwelling are the ones paying for that sprinkler service through the water rate. Clearly, this is a very complex rate system, and it, it requires some thought, but I think we've, we've again heard things this evening and in previous years about how we might be able to make improvements, and it behooves us to, to take a look at these things occasionally.
Okay. I'm going to propose that we vote the rates, because we're not, normally, we would wait a week, but--
We'll meditate.
Right, and we need to get them in place, and there's no changes being proposed. Mr. Russell, can you just display the FY18 rate slide? I'll refer to it. There we go. Okay. So I'm going to move that we approve the following quarterly water and sewer rates effective July 1. They're, they're displayed up on the board. And the water rate is 190 per 100 cubic feet for use up to 700 cubic feet, HCF, 555, that's down at the bottom, per 100 cubic feet for use greater than 7. The sewer rate is 420 per 100 for use up to 7, and 850 per 100 for use greater than 7. Two, to approve a quarterly base charge that you see displayed up on the chart. It's also in our packet on page 10-3. Three, to approve the quarterly base charge for irrigation meters at $10, effective July 1, 2017. Four, to-- Four, to approve the quarterly irrigation rate at 560 per 100 cubic feet effective July 1. Five, to approve the annual fire service charge at $20 per inch diameter squared of fire service pipe effective July 1. And that's the chart, that's the block on the right side of the chart. Six, to adopt an elderly exemption in the amount equivalent to 20% of the water and sewer bills for eligible rate payers with eligibility for said program determined by the eligibility for property tax exemptions allowable under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 17D and 41C, and that the above votes are set under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 22F. All those in favor of that blizzard of words, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you all.
Okay, so next item on the agenda is an all kinds alcoholic beverage common vic violation hearing. I'll note that we're running about 35 minutes late, and I apologize for that. Okay, so this is a public hearing pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 64, to determine whether the Board of Selectmen, as a licensing authority for the town of Brookline, shall modify, suspend, revoke, cancel, decline to renew, or set conditions precedent to the renewal of the all kinds liquor license issued to KRLLC Doing Business as a Air based on a charge that it has maintained an inactive liquor license in violation of Section A11 of the Town of Brookline Sale of Alcoholic Beverage Regulations. This notice, the notice of this violation hearing dated May 15, 2017 was delivered by hand and by email to Kevin Riordan, owner-manager. It's Exhibit 1 to this hearing, and is incorporated by reference into the minutes of this hearing. Hearing is being recorded by the recording secretary. First, who's here to support the charge?
Jonathan Simpson, Associate Town Counsel for the town of Brookline.
And is anyone here to represent the licensee?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Robert Allen, at Law Branch 3 on Washington Street here in Brookline Village, representing the licensee.
Okay, Mr. Allen? Are you, Mr. Allen, are you satisfied with the notice of the hearing?
Yes, I am.
Are there any other exhibits to be marked at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I would request to be marked as Exhibit 2, the February 28, 2012, all kinds common vic license, and vote to award the license to KRLLC Doing Business as Green Bistro, Kevin Riordan, member and manager. That is the license that issued today.
Any other exhibits? Nope. Okay. We'll take evidence and hear from the parties in two phases, first being whether or not there's a violation, and the second being the appropriate action by the board. Mr. Simpson, are you prepared to present the case in support of the charge?
I am. Pursuant, as Mr. Chairman Woskinski said, pursuant to Section A11 of the Town of Brookline Sale of Alcoholic Beverages Regulations, any licensee that ceases sales of alcoholic beverages without first giving notice to the town and receiving prior permission is potentially subject to cancellation of its license after a hearing. This regulation is in keeping with the state statutory scheme, in particular, Chapter 138, Section 77 of the general laws, which grants the local licensing authority the ability to cancel liquor licenses if the licensee ceases to conduct the licensed business.
Mr. Allen, on behalf of the licensee, are you contesting the violation that the business has maintained an inactive license?
No.
Okay. Are there any witnesses you'd like to call, or evidence you'd like to present, or statement you'd like to make with regard to liability?
No.
Do the members of the board have any questions? I see none. Okay, we'll now decide whether or not the licensee is responsible for the violation with which it's charged, and then we'll turn to the question of what, if any, action the board should take in the event it finds a violation. I'll therefore make a motion for a finding that the licensee is responsible for the violation described in the hearing notice dated May 15, 2017, marked as Exhibit 1. All those in favor of the finding of responsible with regard to charge of maintaining an inactive license in violation of Section A11 of the Town of Brookline Sale of Alcoholic Beverage Regulations say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We'll continue with the determination of the appropriate action by the board. Mr. Simpson, do you have a recommendation?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Our recommendation, which is in keeping with what we know to be ABCC policy, upon revocation or cancellation of a license, is to give the license holder six months to effect either a resume activity on the license or transfer the license. I apologize, Mr. Chairman, and I, there is a typo in the script I gave you. The date-
We're reading from a script?
Yes. Some of us can't sell it quite as well as you do.
You've ruined our secrets! I'm shocked, shocked, shocked.
The dates should be, we recommend that the cancellation of the license be effective December 27. That is six months from today, 2017. If by December 26, 2017, the licensee has not either activated the license or obtained Board of Selectmen approval to transfer the license to a new Brookline location or a new licensee at the same Brookline location, I would note that is completing the transfer, not simply applying for the transfer. In my discussions with Mr. Allen about the situation, and as you might have known, seen if you've read news about the space, there is, there have been, has been interest in by restaurants to open there. Those negotiations, my understanding is they are continuing. They may, they may work out, they may not, but I believe that in this case, a six-month stay is an excellent approach to, for the board to take, both as a defensible position, should it get appealed, but also as a way to give the license holder every opportunity to effectuate the license.
Okay. Mr. Allen, do you have any comments or would like to respond?
Well, I'll just say, I appreciate working with Mr. Simpson on this. That is the case. You know, first of all, we've never been trying to hide this. Every November, we talked to Brendan about it. The building department is aware of all the issues we've had relative to the actual physical building and the number of structural issues we had. It really has delayed this a lot longer than we anticipated. So we feel that we're pretty close now, and hopefully, we will have this. This is ample time, and I appreciate the town working with us to get that opportunity. One thing I think that is important, that we may not think about in the big picture of Brookline, is having a liquor license in the village, I think, is important. If you really break down the Brooklyn into different villages, this is something that we're missing here in restaurants that have full-service alcohol, which I think helps maintain, the building helps bring vitality, and we all know that the village here is a little bit slower in coming up. Not that we want it to be Washington Square, but certainly, another restaurant active in the community is, would be a good thing. So we'd appreciate the opportunity.
Any response or comments from the board? Selectman Hamilton?
Forgive my ignorance, is this space vacant right now?
It is.
Okay.
It is. Still under construction. It's right next to the cleaners down here, next to where the work share place is, across from the post office.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Ready for a motion? So I'll move that the board cancel the license effective December 27, 2017, if by December 26, 2017, the licensee has not either, A, activated the license, or B, obtained Board of Selectmen approval to transfer the license to a new Brookline location or to a new licensee at the same Brookline location. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay.
Does that mean that, I'm still with Gina Riley from Precinct 16.
Haven't changed.
50 minutes, unlike the weather. What does that mean in terms of the value of the license? And then, the opportunity would be, I think you have a fixed number of licenses now in Brookline, so it doesn't mean-
And we're starting to hit the ceiling.
I'm sorry?
We're near the ceiling, so.
Okay, but it means that you're still keeping that ceiling?
Oh, yeah.
You're not losing any.
This ties the license up, yeah.
Does that mean that it's for sale, that the current person, and we don't know what the offenses were other than that it was allowed to lapse, does that mean he can sell it for a value?
It's illegal to sell liquor licenses in the state of Massachusetts.
So how is it that, I've seen contracts where a liquor store license was transferred to another for a value, a very high value?
In Brookline?
Yes, and, oh, he left. Bobby Allen was the attorney for that. He's still here. Oh, good. Remember that?
I've never sold a liquor license in the town of Brookline. It's not transferable. It doesn't have any value, unlike other communities. City of Boston's a little bit different, but Brookline, I mean, you might see an asset transfer where you're selling the goodwill of the store, and the customer list, and the name, and things like that. And typically, the equipment has the most value, but there's never been a value placed, least in a transaction that I've been involved with, with a liquor license. Yeah. Because there, you're in this town, it's different than Boston where people would lend on it. Here, it's just different. Maybe when we get all out of liquor licenses, it may change, but-
Into pot, I think. So in this particular case, do you know what will happen to that license in terms of value? Will it automatically go to whoever picks it up, or does it revert back to the power of the board's-
Well, it's not automatic.
I'm sorry?
It's not automatic, so if there's another restaurant operator, they would have to-
Right, right. It sounds like they might even be ready to do that. But let's assume for the minute, just as an education for me, that it doesn't happen, what happens to that license?
It would be revoked, right? So if, it would come back to the town.
I don't have the ability to sell the license to Washington Square Store or something like that. The unique thing about Brookline is that the licenses are issued to the establishment, to the address. So in Boston, I could sell something in certain locations to other locations, but in Brookline you can't. So this license will stay at that location or be returned to the board, and our goal is to open a restaurant at that location.
It can transfer, though. You said, didn't you say you could also transfer to another address?
Another operator.
It would be an application for them to come in and somebody else to transfer it. As far as I know, there'd be no-
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
We're ready for the next item. And I see Mr. Lyons and Ms. O'Connor patiently sitting in the back. So you guys can pick who goes first. So these are candidates for reappointment to the Park and Rec Commission. So Park and Rec, just like most of the boards and commissions, the members are on three-year terms. They're staggered, they're, what, nine members of the Park and Rec?
Seven.
Seven. So three are up this year, and you guys, two of the three, and we interviewed Clara Patcholder last week. So, Ms. O'Connor?
Good evening. I want to go first because Danny's going to copy my answers anyway, so. What are you going to say?
That's just called efficiency.
Exactly, exactly. Good evening, everyone. I'm back. You want me to start off with anything in particular?
No, just tell us-
When I finish this year-
Tell us what's going on in Park and Rec.
When I finish this year, it'll be 21 years.
Wow. Really?
Yeah. I know.
You're so young.
I'm so young, I know. Thanks, Bernie. You're always my favorite.
Please. And tell me I'm young.
Yeah, you're so young.
Thank you.
We're like the same age, I'm sure.
See, Selectman Green doesn't have any gray hair.
No, I know. I know. I refuse to die, in many ways. Oh, well. Yeah, so, we're just, you know, redesigning parks like crazy, and depending upon the budget and the cycle, each park lasts like 20, 22 years or so. As you can see from the info we showed you, we sent in to you folks, we just finished a couple. Emerson is about to start. Pierce's grass is about to be unveiled. That's the last piece for Pierce, and it's all set. We just finished, we just wrapped up Corey Hill and something else. We'd kind of do two in a row. Brookline Avenue just wrapped up in design, and those will, the Potterham, oh, Potterham Library was a little, yeah, that was a little design that we did a year or so ago. But, so, you know, we just keep on going. We're up on the newest pieces of play equipment, the most exciting pieces, what the kids love, what works for each neighborhood. Each neighborhood has a different flavor. We try to do something a little different and go to different manufacturers, you know, to have a little bit, something different. And we learn from each park design that we do as well. You know, our parks, with the number of students that we have in the, in the schools these days, our outdoor spaces are quite valuable, so we're, we're looking to preserve and protect, looking to, you know, add to the mix if we can. Fisher Hill opened a year ago, and that was a big deal. Gorgeous Park, if you haven't had a chance to go through there, you just have to go up and hang there for a little bit. It's really a wonderful place. That's our, you know, that one we did purchase from the MWRAs, you all know. And an opportunity like that coming along again would be wonderful. So we just want to make sure that we're paying attention to our parks and open spaces, and that we've got things for everyone, not just the students, for the elderly, for the middles. I don't think I'm elderly yet, despite the gray, but, so, you know, for everybody in town. That's it. Thank you.
So one of the big issues we're dealing with is what's happening at the Baldwin School, with the, with the school. So what we're trying to do, as you all know, is come up with a win-win situation where the park gets improved and we have some shared use. So can you just tell us, kind of your approach to how you're thinking about that?
So, you know, when the Baldwin School site was chosen, you know, I thought personally it would be a great opportunity for students, youths, to be playing on the parkland at Sewell. I think that if anyone that's been involved in the design of the night school knows the kinds of back and forth that's been going on at the night school meetings and at the park commission as well, we've been pushing back on various things, on roadways, on drop-off areas, and, you know, personally, I think, yes, let's have more people in the park and playing in the park, et cetera, and not at the cost of losing any of our precious parkland in that, in that spot. So what would we do to Sewell as a renovation without the school in mind? And can we, can we be there? Can we do the same thing to that park by building on the Baldwin land? And I think we can, and I think we're getting closer, and I think every time I go to a meeting, there's something else great that I see, and, you know, the more we push back, the more we're being heard, and I think, you know, it looks like it could be a good opportunity. We know it could be a good opportunity, and I look forward to seeing, you know, where it goes, where the process takes us, and I think we're heading in the right direction.
Right, and as you know, and just make sure the public's aware, we've, we've hired a landscape architect to, as peer review, to help us puzzle through, and I think the, some of the recommendations and findings of that peer review will be discussed at the next building committee meeting, though I don't have a date for that yet.
Right. I think that's really important. You know, Jonathan Levy, who's an amazing architect, he's a building architect, and so one of the things I think that we kept asking for, or members of the night school building committee were asked, was asking for, is, you know, what do the slopes look like? What's the land going to look like? How far in is that parking lot going to come? What kind of roadway do you need, and how will this impact the park? So, you know, to get those answers, it's hiring a landscape architect and having a peer review come in, and I think, I'm looking forward to hearing, you know, what their thoughts are and where that takes us, because I think- their thoughts are and where that takes us, because I think that will be really helpful to have somebody from a different angle take a look at it and decide, you know, what makes sense for the park. You know, how much parking does the park need? We know the park needs expanded parking. We know that. What's the magic number? You know, what else are we going to be doing in there? So I think that's going to be really helpful.
Well, I'd like to say that as a co-chair of the BHS Expansion Advisory Committee, of which you're a member, your participation has been fantastic.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I really enjoyed that.
I think you bring a level of sense and thoughtfulness to the process.
Good.
And, you know, you're there to continually remind us that this is a partnership, and at the night school as well. And not just the night school, but we deal with Cypress Field, we have a shared-use building in Tappan.
That's right.
So, and I think REC also uses Squishin' Mont at times, right?
Yes, very much so. The schools and the REC have a very big back and forth use, yeah.
And so it's extremely important that we work together, and I think you've been the embodiment of that.
Great. Thank you.
And that terrific partnership.
Thank you so much. I really enjoyed working on that, and I think, you know, as someone that's, that grew up here, raised my family here, and my grandsons are here, my father was here, and his father. You know, it's just, it's really interesting, and you have to be mindful of the community as a whole, you know. We're not just on our own postage stamp. We sort of, we all have to jump in and push each other back and forth a little bit, I think, to come up with the best for the town, you know, for everyone. So I've enjoyed working on that group. That's a nice group to work on.
Sleckman Franklin?
So something I haven't heard about in a while, and I'm hoping you can give me an update on it, is this desire for a premier baseball field in town. It's been something that's been kicking around for ten, maybe 15 years now?
Twenty, 21.
Twenty, 25.
Yeah.
And I know we've had conversations of varying intensity over the years, but it's something I haven't heard about in a few years, and I guarantee that the desire hasn't disappeared. So where are we on that?
So every time, you know, in the 21 years that I've been on almost, every time a park comes up, I'll say, can we put a baseball field there? So when I came on, Brookline Ave was being changed into a lit field for softball, and it used to be a high school baseball field. St. Mary's High School played there, the American Legion played there, and, you know, home run balls went out onto Brookline Ave, whichever side. So they decided that wasn't such a great place.
Broke a few windshields?
Broke a few windshields, you know. And a lot of good ballplayers came from out down there, but-
A lot of broken windshields.
A lot of broken windshields, exactly. So ever since then, we've been, you know, it kind of comes up, but there's no place big enough. I mean, when we did the transfer station, the footprint wasn't going to be big enough. Fisher Hill wasn't going to be, you know, the right dimension. So it's a question of space, unfortunately, and, you know, I was a mother of baseball players, so for me, it's always sort of right there. And, you know, there's been a couple of thoughts on some places that just didn't pan out, and I think it's about space. And if it happens, I hope I'm still here. So let's do it in the next three years. So I can go. Is that it? Thank you.
What, forgive my ignorance, what part of town do you live?
I live right on the other side of St. Mary's Church. I live right here in the village.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So I came here early to miss the rain. That's why, I was walking, and I missed it, and I saw the rainbow. You guys, I don't know if you saw it.
No, we missed it.
We heard the sound.
That's why we ran out to the hall to see the rainbow.
Oh, I wish-
Yes, Brookline Village, that's where I grew up.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you all.
Any other questions? Okay.
All right, I look forward to casting my vote, casting a vote for me.
Okay. Mr. Lyons, welcome.
She's a tough act to follow.
She sure is. Now, all you have to do is copy her answers.
Ditto. No, she brought up a lot of good, a lot of good points, and, you know, I look around from each time I'm up for reappointment, and when I wrote my response of what we've accomplished in the last three years, and there certainly wasn't enough space, because it just seems they pile up one after another, and I think as a commission, we've done a very good job, especially through the design review process and bringing in the members, the uses of the parks on those design review processes, to let us know what they want, and we've responded very well, and we listen, and one thing that the commission does very, extremely well, is listen to all parties. And if you look at Pierce Park, it's a tremendous example of what's been done. If you look pretty soon at what's being done at Brookline Avenue, you're going to find that that play area behind the Lynch Center is going to be a state-of-the-art accessible park, primarily because, the importance of that, especially because of its proximity to the hospitals. And Clara was really very instrumental in some of that design. And also, what's her name, Dawn Oats, was on that design review committee. Excuse me?
Playboy grave, right? She has a company called-
Yes, yes. And they came to us, and, you know, they've done a lot to improve that park. And you're talking about baseball, and it's near and dear to my heart as well. I grew up in Worcester, and there are two baseball fields in that city. One is named after my parents, because they were founders of Little League there, and one is named after my late brother, so, who happened to be a pretty good ballplayer. Anyway, but at Brookline Avenue, there was a plan. They were trying to get funding from the Red Sox Foundation and things like that to put a whole new ballpark redesigned with the home plate on, next to the playground hitting out over Aspen Wall Avenue. So the windows wouldn't have been broken on Brookline Avenue, more of the people who were stuck on Aspen Wall. They may have been protected by some trees. But it was a nice design, and it could have been really nice, but it was a high-ticket item, and we simply didn't have it in the budget. Perhaps down the road, that can be remedied if we get some private financing. But by and large, I think we've done a great job with the design of the Corey Hill Park. What else? Nancy Hough.
Fisher Hill, of course.
Fisher Hill is a gem.
It's a work of art.
It truly is. They did such a great job up there, and I think that if there is an award to be given, I would hope that that's high on the list of nominees, because it's a terrific park. You know, we put the driving range up at the golf course, which we were standing up there a few weeks ago, and I know that it's not popular with everybody, but as I was standing there and we were calculating that every time someone hit a ball down that range, it was 13.3 cents. And that money will do a lot to improve the course and a lot to improve some of the, some of the conservation around the course. It's a lot of pristine acreage that costs the town virtually no money. I would like to see eventually, perhaps, some of that revenue go toward renovating that clubhouse, because I think that that's a real underutilized asset that this town has. I can envision that as being a, and actually, we had a plan from, an architectural school came and presented a plan as a class project on how to do that. And it was a very sensible plan. Maybe not all of it could be implemented, but it would be, I think, 180 to 200-seat venue. You know, if you, that's, there's a small weddings, bat mitzvahs, bat mitzvahs, you know. And also, the plan is to separate that from a restaurant or a pub downstairs, which would serve the golfers. Occasionally now, someone has to go in the clubhouse to get something. If there's a, an event, like after a funeral, someone may go there, and it's kind of awkward for a golfer to be walking through that. So if that can be separated, and I think that would be, you know, that would be a great asset for the town. It would be certainly costly, you know, but everything is, you know, but with the revenue stream coming in and adding to that from the driving range, I think all of that will enhance our ability to get things like that done. I mean, you all well know that we can use as much revenue as we can-
Sure.
-because it doesn't get any cheaper to run these towns, and parks and open space and everything else. So I'm hoping that you'll reappoint me.
Okay. Let me ask you about Baldwin. I've been asking everyone else, so I won't let you off the hook until-
Okay.
-tell us about your views on Baldwin and what's happening over there.
I think it certainly can get done. I know that notwithstanding, you're up against it with lawsuits, the situation with land-water conservation, and if things can be done, we'll look at the plans as they come forward, and if it comes to a decision of the Park and Recreation Commission, we'll stand up and do what's right. The important thing is that everybody is heard, and as a commission, we, as I said, we listen to everybody. Not everybody is going to be happy with the decisions, but somewhere along the line, if it comes to us making a decision, we will make that decision. That's why they pay us the big bucks.
How amenable are you in general to swaps of Article 97 land that is currently under the control of the Parks and Rec Commission? And, you know, if we were to acquire a different piece of land, is it possible to swap so that we could do some things that are not usually down on Article 97 land?
I suppose, we will listen to everything. I mean, it depends on what you're talking about and how it fits into what it's replacing and what you want to use the land for, or the parkland for. So, I mean, we have to abide by the, by the guidelines of Article 97, but we'll do our best, and we'll have a discussion. I don't know how specific you want me to be. I don't know, frankly. It depends on the situation.
Well, I'm thinking of, for instance, the issue of the gym at Sewell Recreation Center. You know, I've looked at the gym, and, you know, I'm not no expert at all, but it seems to me that it could easily be ready for some refreshing and some-
Oh, to say the least.
You know, but if, if that gets in the way, if we can't do it because of Article 97 on that land, then is the idea of swapping land for a different place, for land in a different place, so that we can make modifications which, and renovations which, you know, the public and our children benefit from that?
Well, then that's certainly something that has to be taken into consideration. Depending upon the specifics, we would have to listen to all sides and make a decision again.
The issue of the gym, yeah, that hasn't been the focus, because-
I was posing it more as-
Right. The areas of focus have been the parking lot on the heat side, and then the connection between the parking lot and the proposed school site, and then, of course, the rear of the school site, as it relates to an email sent to us by an employee of the Park Service alleging that the protection is broader than we had anticipated, on the back being that we accepted a $10,000 grant in 1975 or some such year to pave over-
A map we don't have, but anyway.
We do have the map.
Is that the land-water conservation?
Correct. Which we are contesting. So.
Well, but speaking of parking lot, I mean, you know, this Sewell Recreation Center is not in the path of, I mean, there is a team, not nearby, but let's be realistic, many parents and families drive, and they have that place to park. So, you know, how can we, isn't that an acceptable use of the land so that people can access the recreation site and the improvement?
Yes.
So, including the parking lot, it seems to me is, is an example of the kind of thing we want here in order to have better access to the facility.
Yeah, that's right. And it's long been in our plans, future plans, to create more parking up there. Now, as Nancy said, what is the magic number? I don't know. What is acceptable? I don't know. But we need to have it so that there's enough parking to service the programming that we do at the Sewell Recreation Center for the, for ballgames at both the upper and lower Sewell field. As it is now, parking is inadequate. People are parked illegally all over that lower lot, and they're stuffed in like sardines up in the upper lot. So it's long in our plan to expand that lot, and that's, again, something that we'll have to go through the design review process and make the decision as to just how big. And do we allow access off of wood, woodland, excuse me, off of woodland? You know, all of that will come into play. I know there's a lot of opposition, and I'm sure you know it very well, but all of that will get ironed out, and then at some point, at some point, we'll find a school, a space for a school someplace, God willing. So.
Sleckman Hamilton?
What would your concerns be? I understand that the country club wants to have the U.S. open and may want access to Lynch or-
Putterham.
Putterham Golf Course. Would you have any concerns about entering into such an agreement for the country club to kind of use Putterham as like a possible staging area?
Well, certainly, there are going to be concerns, and probably the biggest concern I would have was, is it's going to mean a loss of revenue. I would hope that we would be able to recover all of that revenue. It's going to mean some, some, I don't know if I'd call it damage or-
It's damage.
Damage.
Call it damage.
Damage to our course, and we would like that to be completely restored on their dollar. That plus loss of revenue and things like that. I'm not on the committee that's negotiating that. I'm not privy to the negotiations, but just on my own thoughts, if I were on that, at that table, this is what I would, I would be advocating for. I don't know what the specifics were the last time that the Ryder Cup was here, and whether or not we received enough money from the USGA to cover our expenses. I know it means a lot to the town, it brings a lot of revenue to the town. However, there's a lot of expense, and we would like to see that, any damage done be repaired and improved upon, frankly.
Right, there's an opportunity for improvement.
I tweeted Nancy with a persistent complaint, perhaps-
I tortured Nancy with a persistent complaint perhaps or design request that the commission hears. So I will torture you with the second persistent concern or design request, and that's about a skate park. Where are we on that?
Well, I'm the world's biggest advocate for it. I mean, I love skateboards. I think they're the coolest people in the world of all ages. And interestingly enough, I took a bicycle ride Sunday and went down on the other side of the Science Museum, and for the first time, I saw the bike, the skate park underneath the Zacon Bridge, and it's fantastic. And it's so nice to see so many people of all ages using that and having a good time. And it's a real hot potato when it comes to getting something like that. When we did the Waldstein Park, we did get it into the design of the park. However, it was an item that we didn't have the money for in the budget, so it became an ad alternate. And when we do add, there were several, the stairs, I forget what else, but there were several, and we prioritized them. So, I don't know if the skate, we had a skate spot, perhaps, perhaps the area as large as the area that you people are sitting at. And it was in an area that I thought was tremendous. It was right up against the tracks. It was, I think, the closest house to it was 75 or 125 yards away. So, I thought that it would be, you know, not that big an issue. But we still ran into a great deal of opposition. So, in order for that to eventually get built, if they do the ad alternates, say it's number four, the first three have to be done first, and then the next ad alternate might be the skate park. Whether or not skate spot, whether or not that gets done, I don't know. I hope it does.
Well, thank you for bringing up North Point Park. I think it's a, that's a beautiful park.
Which one?
North Point Park, the one in Cambridge underneath the Zacon Bridge.
Oh, it's terrific. And I love seeing parks where people, well, that's what they're for, for people to come and use it.
It's a great example of a bunch of different types of park users having a home, having a place to do whatever they choose to do in a park, and existing in harmony in sort of a symbiotic way. The skateboarders aren't coming at the expense of the people who want to sit around a water element or read a book under a tree.
Right. You know, I mean, you know, they're citizens, and they deserve to have their spot, and I think they get a bad rap. You know, people sometimes want, they like to look at our parks, but they don't like to see a lot of activity, and certainly not a lot of noise. But to me, that's music to my ears.
Okay, I think, I think you've run the gamut. So, we're not going to vote tonight. We'll vote on a different night, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I think, oh, we have something else.
Two more things.
We have two more things. The annual appointments, so I'll turn this over to Mr. Collier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the time of year before, right before the new fiscal year, where the board typically makes its annual appointments to, of department heads and administrators and other non-union employees of the town. And also, I'm asking you this evening also to replace Steve Cirillo on the retirement board by new finance director Gina Franconi. And then the second item is approving or authorizing an adjustment to the wage schedules of those various non-union employees, and we are proposing that the board adopt a 2.0% increase in that wage schedule for fiscal year 2018, which begins next week on July 1st. That 2% is, as you know, the general wage increase that the board has negotiated with the union employees, and it's effectively a budget for in fiscal 18, and I believe is consistent with the kind of wage growth and inflation that we're experiencing in this region. So, let me specifically go through the items. So, the first is the annual appointment of these various employees, which are included on Schedule or Attachment A, and these are the department heads, some of the mid-management and non-union positions, and confidential employees, and then a number of miscellaneous appointments that are required by the general laws and so on. So, this is, a lot of these are traditional. I will just mention that there are, the town clerk and the library director do not appear on this because you don't appoint them. The town clerk is an independently elected official of the town, and the library director is appointed by the independently elected Board of Library Trustees. You will also see that the town administrator, the police chief, and our new public health director is not here because those appointments were for multi-year appointments, and those three employees are in the, within that three-year term, so their appointments are not coming up. And I would also say that the three-year appointment of our town council, Ms. Murphy, is up this year, and so her appointment, other than all the others, is for one year, excuse me, for three years as opposed to one. So, perhaps...
But I'll, let me interject that the position, the only position here that has its own warrant article is in this list, and that's the measurers of wood and park. And that's Elmon Hendrickson and Mr. William McGrode. Can't forget that.
So, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to go through all these and then take votes, or do you want to do them one at a time?
Why don't we have one, why don't you?
An omnibus.
An omnibus vote.
Okay, well, in that case, I do want to split the two votes up, but then in that case, I would also like to recommend that Gina Franconi, who is our, I want this to be just a little separate, but you can do it under the same vote, but I want to acknowledge it separately, that Gina Franconi, I'm recommending is be, you're appointee to the Brookline Retirement Board. The Brookline Retirement Board is a somewhat independent board that is made up of the town comptroller, ex-officio, two members that are elected by the employees or retirees of the retirement system, and this one member appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and then all those members, those four members, then appoint or chooses the other, the fifth member. And so, since Steve Cirillo retired, he did retain his position on the retirement board, the board's appointee in the retirement board, and was very appreciative of his willingness to do that and the time it took for him to do that. But now that Gina Franconi has been appointed and is solidly in place, in fact, has attended at least one retirement board meeting, has met with Steve, I think is ready for that. So, I would include the Ms. Franconi's appointment to the retirement board, and that's also a three-year term of appointment as part of your vote under the appointment section.
Okay, so, so I'll move that we approve the annual appointment of department heads and other personnel for the period July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, as recommended by the town administrator and is appearing as Attachment A in our package. All those, any additions to that motion?
Well, just the appointment of Gina Franconi to the retirement board for a three-year term of appointment effective on July 1st.
Okay, and that's part of the motion? Got that? So, all those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you. And so the second vote would be the authorizing the wage adjustments of 2.0%.
Okay, I will move that we approve wage adjustments of 2.0% effective July 1, 2017.
Yeah, 17, correct.
For positions on the department head pay plan, the mid-management professional/technical pay plan, and for other non-union positions as determined by the town administrator. Anything to add to that motion, or that's a good motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And we're ready to move on to the open-air parking licenses? Mr. Faison?
Good evening. I'm just here in a to-answer questions role concerning these open-air parking.
You're not going to tell us what to do?
Well, what I was going to do is walk you through.
Okay.
I can walk you through some of the issues. First, there are two licenses that have not brought in applications to renew. They are noted on page 14-1. The recommendation of the office is to approve these licenses, but then to charge them a late fee if they do end up applying for them, in addition to the original fee. On page 14-3, there are two notes from the building department about two locations that look like they have unauthorized spots. Now, this is somewhat a disconnect between when the inspections are done, building department does inspections during the day, and the police department does their inspections during the night. So, building department saw this, the police department has to go out and check on them during those times. Then on page 14-6, it is the police department interdepartmental memo, and there are four locations that have similar issues at them. I think 101 Longwood is consistent in both of them along with Winslow, but both of those locations along with the other two locations need to be inspected, both during the daytime and the nighttime. So, what the office would recommend is making the licenses conditional on additional inspections just to figure out the exact number of spaces that those entities are renting out. We don't want them renting out additional ones if we're not licensing them.
So, to be clear, we're not recommending any increase in parking for those. We want to verify that, in fact, they're complying with the license, and I think, given that they have been identified in these reports, we think it'd be appropriate for the board to condition the approval on successful inspection of those premises.
Okay.
So, there's generally two conditions. One would be the late, the late charge if they do apply for those two establishments, did you say? And then the conditions on the, on the four that have been identified in the police report.
What if they don't apply?
Then we would not, your vote would not be effective, they would just...
So, what happens to the space?
They would no longer be authorized to operate a parking lot.
And how do we, what do we, what do we do in response?
We would...
You shut them down?
They, we would, we would inform them. Is there a date on that, Austin, that we're looking to? Well, we have been communicating with them. It's not like, you know, they just haven't responded, so it's possible they just forgot or are inattentive to it, or that they choose not to. We don't know that. So, after a period of time when we're giving them the opportunity, we would just tell them that they are no longer authorized. We'd issue them a letter, and then we would enforce it if they chose not to. They would have to go to court.
These two locations on the front page are notoriously tardy. They've been tardy in the past as well, and at one point, Brenda gets through to them. They come in and pay the late fee and the charge, and they can get their license. But we make, adding this late fee on it makes an additional step that holds the license until everything's paid up.
Which two locations?
On the front page, 1646 Beacon Street and 397 Washington Street.
Oh, okay.
Excuse me. And then the other four locations are on 14-6.
Yeah.
So, on the other four locations, if we find that they have more cars than they're authorized to have, I guess the question is, you know, what do we do and what happens to those people who have rented spaces that are unauthorized?
Well, I can't answer for that because it's a private transaction.
It's not our problem.
It's not our problem, but we would, no, it's not our problem. In fact, we have a license that grants them less spaces, so if they have chosen to exceed that, I think that's their risk, and they would have to deal with it. So, I think what we would do is, first of all, I believe that we'll get them in compliance, but if we don't, then I think this board would have to actually hold a public hearing and revoke that license. It'd be another step. Has not happened yet, I don't believe.
Not in my time here.
As someone who parks in one of these, what do we call it, heat islands, I just wonder what happens to those people who have paid their $200 or $300 per month and now can't park there. It's not our problem, but it's just...
I checked the terms of the agreement, but I, yeah.
You're out of luck. If they're renting spaces that are not authorized to be rented.
Maybe we, do we have any kind of education that we provide to people who are looking for spaces? Do we advise them to check the license and make sure that, you know, they're actually renting a legal spot?
It's my knowledge, no, but...
Well, you know, I think those inquiries come a lot to the traffic division and to the planning department, and if they don't do that, I would encourage them to do that. I do think that they, they have a list of all the authorized open-air parking lots, and they may distribute that information, but we can tell them to, I don't know, what would we say, when, make sure that they're, they are in compliance at the time usually. I mean, this is the only time of year, I think, when we're finding some issues.
Yep, and it's all mapped out in GIS too, so people can get a map and see where the parking lots are and stuff like that, but the individual transactions themselves are hard for us to govern over.
I think, I think we can resolve it. I usually, there's a lot of, there's some turnover in these spots, and so they're, they usually are able to resolve it. I haven't seen a situation where they, where they had to cancel a, an agreement with a parker yet, but I suppose it's possible.
I think this is an opportune time to remind people that there are other overnight parking options other than the private lots, that the town allows for overnight parking in Beacon Street median in certain locations and some of our municipal lots. So, by no means are these licensed overnight parking facilities the only, the only game in town. And for information about that, see the town website or contact the traffic division for the details of where.
And just for the record, I mean, this raises the issue of our overnight parking ban, which is encouraging these heat islands in town. I'm not suggesting that we relook at that, but at some point, I think there are people in town who would want to.
Yep, that comes up occasionally.
The two you have listed here on page 14-3, these have been inspected by the building department?
The building department noted those two, but those are also noted in the police report on 14-6. Those same locations for their...
Okay, so, I will move that we approve the open-air licenses listed on pages 14-8 through 14-18 with the following conditions. For the, for the two licensees that have not yet renewed listed on 14-1, we, the motion is to approve the license if they apply for renewal and pay a $50 late fee. And for the licenses, licensees appearing on page 14-6, four of them, that they be, the license be conditioned upon additional inspections.
Inspections that are consistent with, and findings that are consistent with the current licenses.
Right, you got it. That's the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And I believe that's, that's, that's it.
That is it.
Okay, that's the ballgame.
Thank you.
We've concluded our business for tonight. Thank you. Our next meeting is July 11th, two weeks.
Happy Fourth of July.